Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, my colleagues on council, friends, city staff, and invited guests. Welcome to our public work session. I would now ask my colleagues on council to please vote your presence electronically.
Five members of the City Council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now I will turn over the meeting and ask our interim City Manager, Ms. Terry. Ma'am.
Good evening Portsmouth family. Tonight, we're going to start our public work session with two presentations. Our first presentation is going to be Share the Air, and Ms. Rachel Johnson is going to come up and introduce herself, her organization, and the presenters. And then after that presentation, we'll go into budget. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Johnston. I'm here on behalf of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. And Share the Air is a project of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. We work for 100% tobacco and vapor-free outdoor spaces, for example, parks and playgrounds. I have two wonderful high school youth here with me, Amber and Haven, and they're going to go ahead and kick us off for our very short presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies, you go ahead and state your name, and then you can begin.
Yes, sir. My name is Amber Brown, and I go to Manor High School, and I live here in Portsmouth.
My name is Haven Coe. I go to Manor High School, and I live in Portsmouth.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming today to learn more about Share the Air. Your time and your interest to help create a healthier Virginia is not taken for granted. Y Street is the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth Award-winning volunteer statewide youth initiative. Y Street encourages high school students across Virginia to make their communities healthier by reducing tobacco use and promoting obesity prevention efforts. Y Street partners with high schools across the Commonwealth to train youth on how to be effective advocates.
Since our communities have successfully advocated for tobacco-free school environments with our campaign 24/7 Virginia, Y Street is continuing to promote policies that prevent youth tobacco use by supporting 100% tobacco-free and e-cigarette-free outdoor spaces. We do this through Share the Air. Share the Air's primary goal is to create 100% tobacco-free and e-cigarette-free outdoor public spaces such as parklands, playgrounds, and trails. The Parks and Recreation Community and city leaders can lead the charge in establishing tobacco-free and vapor-free outdoor recreational areas through voluntary policy adoption. We are hoping that you will take into consideration partnering with Share the Air by voting on Share the Air in a future meeting and allowing the Parks and Recreation Department to update park rules to include tobacco-free and e-cigarette-free outdoor policies. So, you may be asking, why go tobacco-free? Tobacco products account for almost 40% of all littered items in the nation. This makes them the most littered item in the United States. Maintenance to clean up this litter is costly. The Virginia Department of Transportation reported spending $3.5 million per year just to pick up roadside litter in the state of Virginia. Another reason to consider going tobacco and e-cigarette-free in parks and recreational areas is because they serve as key areas for creating and promoting healthy communities. Oftentimes, these areas are viewed as pillars or catalysts for health in the community and for creating healthier lifestyles of residents. Building programs in community around safe environments and positive childhood experiences is critical, and reducing exposure to adverse effects like tobacco plays a strong part in this. Other recent events have highlighted the dangers of these products as well. In June, the FDA ordered the removal of all Juul e-cigarette products from sales. The removal of these products stirs up new concerns as other products have grown in popularity, including one-use disposable products like the Puff Bar. Among current youth e-cigarette users, the most commonly used device type was disposables, according to the 2022 National Youth Tobacco Survey. With an increase of these disposable products, there may be an increase in people using them and disposing them in parks, lands, and recreational areas.
Over the course of four years, we have received a ton of support from Virginians. 7,101 total support cards collected to date. Data shows that... Data collected from community members through our on-the-ground efforts show that 96% of Virginians in and around the Portsmouth area believe that cigarettes, empty e-cigarettes, pods, and vaping cartridges are litter and not biodegradable and are toxic to humans and animals. 89% of Virginians in and around the Portsmouth area agree that tobacco litter negatively impacts their outdoor experience. 97% of those in and around the Portsmouth area are in favor of tobacco-free outdoor policies. As you can see, a strong majority of individuals in and around Portsmouth and those in nearby areas support Share the Air and its policies.
I strongly support Share the Air because I'm an athlete who grew up playing in Virginia and Portsmouth's beautiful parks and recreational areas. I believe that these areas should be able to be experienced by everyone in their safest and most true extent, which includes them being 100% tobacco and e-cigarette-free.
I support Share the Air because cigarette and vape cartridges are harmful to the environment and other wildlife. I love animals, and cigarette butts can be harmful to the animals if they're ingested.
We know that there's public interest around this issue and that localities and park authorities can adopt tobacco-free and e-cigarette-free outdoor policy. The campaign currently has 19 partners. Some of these localities include the towns of Colonial Beach, Hopewell, and the counties of Chesterfield, New Kent, Franklin, Hanover, Henrico, and York County just joined last month. We are also meeting and have met with the localities such as Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach. Thanks to their commitment, over 1 million Virginians are protected and can enjoy a healthier outdoor environment. We are hoping to add you to the map. We encourage you to visit our website and download the map to share the good news with others and explore the free resources, free, that our partners have at their fingertips. Share the Air has received numerous positive responses from the implementation of the Share the Air policy. Just to highlight a couple, Ashland has been a partner since August of 2022 and King George County since March of 2021. In the last one to two years, both localities have seen positive impacts from the implementation of the Share the Air policy. According to Chris Clark, the Director of Parks and Recreation for King George County, when he or his staff have been at parks or playgrounds, they've seen that parents are pointing out the no smoking and vaping signs, and that they've been very happy that the department is advertising the fact that one should not be smoking or vaping near sports fields and playgrounds. And Ashland, Emmy Hawke, the Parks and Recreation Coordinator, believes that this program is the perfect way to improve quality of life for Ashland citizens and visitors as The campaign... As a campaign, we are continuing to engage our partners and bolster their efforts after adopting tobacco-free and e-cigarette-free outdoor spaces. To build off the positive feedback we have been receiving, we continue to improve.
The Share the Air campaign is here to serve as a resource to make the process as light a lift as possible for you. Once you adopt our tobacco-free and e-cigarette-free outdoor policy and sign our commitment form, we provide free signage that you can post in designated areas. We also provide a free toolkit which includes our model policy checklist, implementation, and communication resources, all in one place for you to use. We further help with positive media news attention and help create customized images for ads, and we can help promote your tobacco-free policy on the Share the Air website and social media channels. We want to publicly promote and celebrate your decision to go tobacco and vapor-free and make sure that you get the recognition you deserve for promoting clean and healthy outdoor environments.
Thank you for allowing us to share with you all today about 100% tobacco-free and e-cigarette-free outdoor spaces. Do you have any questions for us?
The floor is up. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, ladies, for your presentation. It was very well done. On Slide seven of your presentation, you have some statistics on what Virginians in and around Portsmouth think and feel. Can you share with me where the data came from? How did you collect the surveys?
Sure. So, students have collected surveys when they're at community events in the area, and the data is from 2019 to 2021. I can go ahead and send the data results over to Ms. White and Ms. Terry, and they can distribute it to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, then I want to... Yeah, okay. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, ladies, for the presentation. You mentioned some areas, I guess Ashland and King George County are locations that are already pledged to sign on. So are you making this pitch to councils all across Virginia and just going about it that way, or how is it?
So, we have a tiered approach. We have a first and second tier, and Portsmouth is in the top two tiers. We look at it... Y Street partners with 24 high schools in Virginia, so we're looking at where we have our partner high schools, where our youth are present, and also where we think would be great areas to start. For example, how Amber mentioned, York County. York County actually started as a pilot project just last month, so they started with their McReynolds Sports Complex. So, we're actually looking at areas that have large athletic fields and playgrounds to see if we can just kind of start small and then go out from there.
Right. And the schools are already covered with all of those.
Correct.
Okay. Well, great job.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Amber and Haven, for the presentation, and you represented Manor High School well. I do have a question in regards to the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. Your funding, where does that come from?
Sure. So, the foundation's based out of Richmond, and the funding comes from the tobacco settlement.
Okay, okay, all right. So, you're not looking for local funding? You feel...
We are not, no. So, the foundation will bring out... Will send at least 10 to 15 of the signs to the city when the city... If the city chooses to partner with the program, so there is no fiscal implication from the city.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, ladies, for your participation. Great job, and I encourage you to continue your advocacy on behalf of this program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, Madam City Attorney has a comment she wants to add to the discussion.
I just wanted to thank the ladies for coming. It was a great presentation, and they emphasized the word volunteer, voluntarily apply this policy. It would not be an ordinance prohibiting smoking. That's not a Dillon Rule authority passed on to the localities. This would be a volunteer effort, a suggestion for participation in these public facilities and areas. So, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Next, we'll... Next, we'll have our proposed fiscal year 2025 budget discussions. Today, we're going to have a discussion about utility rates and fees by Trey Burke, Budget Officer.
Welcome, Mr. Burke.
Good evening, Mayor...
You have the floor, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of Portsmouth City Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting public utility department rates. The discussion will be instrumental in decision-making for the ongoing 2025 budget process. The American Water Works Association, AWWA, recommends best practices that are included in the city's financial policies, which aid in the development of revenue projections for each fiscal year. And considering how much revenue is needed to meet annual and future needs, we strive to set rates which promote long-term financial planning of the department, alignment with national AWWA and regional rates, continuation of operational best practices, current and future regulatory requirements. Also, while not listed in the AWWA recommendations, staff always considers the needs of our rate payers, which includes healthy drinking water, the long-term fiscal health of the system, and keeping services affordable. Prior to adoption of the fiscal year 2018 budget, City Council adopted a 5% annual increase policy for water and sewer usage rates. This was done because city utility rates had not supported the operational and capital needs of the utility system. City Council continues this policy as it adopts the rate... As it... Excuse me. As it adopts the budget ordinance for fees and rates annually. Appendix A of the city code reads, "For all water that passes through meters, customers within the corporate limits of the city shall pay $5.19 per 100 cubic feet of water supplied during the period from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024." And this is the important part. An annual increases of 5% over the rate in effect at the end of the prior fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and each July 1 thereafter until amended. This does not pre-authorize increases in future budget years, but does establish the expectation that staff include a 5% increase in the annual budget proposal. Council must adopt an ordinance anytime it seeks to change the rates. Keep in mind that even with the increases, Portsmouth has among the lowest water and sewer bills regionally. This and the following slide highlight the identified need for additional positions in the public utilities department. Consider that this is a request from the department, and the manager's proposed budget may include more, less, or amended position requests. Still, they are needed positions, and all are oriented toward the incremental improvement of the Department of Public Utilities. I have grouped the requests into administrative or customer service requests and operational requests. These administration positions are to improve outcomes for our customers, providing more timely service and improved customer satisfaction. For the city, this would be more reliable revenue and enhance brand reputation. These positions include an Assistant Director of Administration, Administrative Coordinator, Customer Service Specialist, and Collection Specialist. These operations positions are intended to increase the number of system maintenance projects that can be completed without going to outside contractors and improve work order response times to maintain and repair the system. This includes four water equipment operators, four wastewater equipment operators, an electrician, and a water meter reader... Excuse me, eight water meter readers. The City of Portsmouth is in the preliminary stages of complying with a large federal mandate to secure and improve the resiliency of city-owned dams on Lake Kilby, Lake Cahoon, and Lake Mead. These three bodies of water are located around the downtown Suffolk area and provide drinking water to customers of the Portsmouth Department of Public Utilities. Currently, the projects are on a 10-year timeline with, and note a correction to this slide, design of the first project being programmed for fiscal year 2025 and construction beginning 18 to 24 months later. The city is actively seeking out grant funding and lowered interest rate debt financing opportunities, but still anticipates large debt issuances and debt service payments. The total projected cost of the project is $155 million. And even with over $20 million of projected grant funding secured, the city anticipates $5.9 million in annual debt service payments. This will need to be paid using future current recurring revenue. Lastly, this project will only represent a portion of future capital project budgets, as it will not reduce the need for other projects to be happening throughout the city. And so, you'll still have projects for water distribution and wastewater collection. Based on the previous slides, staff is hoping to gain council consensus on a 2% rate increase. This is 3% lower than the annual policy. Based on preliminary view of current year needs and anticipated increases and future needs for the operating capital budgets, we believe this is the best course of action for fiscal year 2025. This would be an increase of 10 cents per 100 cubic feet of water to $5.29, and an increase of 8 cents per 100 cubic feet of wastewater to $4.16 per CCF. We hope that council considers this increase. With that, I thank you for your time and attention on this matter. I'm now available for any questions or guidance.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burke, thank you for the presentation. Does this increase... Is it applied to commercial and other municipal customers?
Yes, sir. There's one rate for people inside the City of Portsmouth. But there's no distinction between the type of use that it is.
So, we do not have any contractual agreements that are... That this rate increase doesn't apply to?
The... There's the bulk water rate for Chesapeake. That would... This would not impact that, where we sell water directly to the city of Chesapeake. But we don't have any contractual with individual business owners.
Well, the contracts that we have, there isn't a cost of living increase or CPI increase that allows us to go up on their rates.
There isn't. It's set by the contract, not by the rates contained... Not the rates that we're discussing here. That's a separate rate. Sorry, I think I misunderstood your question a little bit, but it's a separate rate that's set independently, so you could go up, but it's still reflected in the contract. The contract wouldn't change.
Right. So, there is a provision to increase the bulk rate?
Yes, sir. By the contract amount. But that's not what we're talking about.
I know what we're talking about. And what I'm talking about is even 2%, which is obviously 3 cents less than what was originally proposed back in 2018 at every budget. But what I'm getting at, that water rate is becoming very difficult for a lot of our
I take it the City Manager wants to expound on that?
Well, I'm here for support, but I believe I know where you're going, and so I just want to make sure that we're saying the same thing. Are you moving in the direction to say, we don't even... We would like to reconsider the 2% increase and make that go away for fiscal year '25? Because by ordinance, it's supposed to be 5%. So, I just need to know where we're going, so I'll know how to kind of move in that direction, conversation discussion-wise.
Well, realizing the mandates, I think it wouldn't be good business if we probably did away with the 2%. But I think we need a better handle on what are the expenses incurred. I know about the mandates. They've been in place for a while. That's why action was taken in 2018. But where are we in the regular cost of operation and the bulk agreements that we have out there? I think we need a better understanding of what those agreements are and how is that rate compared to the residential rate.
Okay. So, let's start with residential rates, since the residential rates are what was actually a part of the ordinance for the 5% increase every year. So, one of the reasons that we looked at reducing the increase this year was because we were looking at giving the citizens a relief in some of the areas where we were constantly increasing the rate to manage the utility projects. One of the reasons why we were going up is because, one, we have so many utility projects in the city that need to happen. We understand that we have some infrastructure issues as it relates to utilities, the... And when I say infrastructure, the pipes under the ground, as it relates... They're 100 years old. So, we were... One of the reasons you did this in '18, and you as in the council at the, you know, the body governing body, was to make sure that we had the cost to cover those things as we went along. And as you all recall, we were always going into more debt. We were constantly going after bonds. We were using $10 million from the utilities fund to fund general fund. So, where we are now, we're looking at the revenue streams we have, and so we're in a good position right now to actually not request so many dollars. I just want to remind everybody, utilities was so far behind. Where we are right now is where we should have been five years ago, as it relates to purchases for equipment, purchases for vehicles, and again, for the complement, staffing. We were, and we are, and now we're getting away from it, we're contracting most of our services out. Now, we're staffing up to do a lot of our stuff in-house. Before, we had to call in to contractors to say, hey, we need this, can you do this? So, all of those dollars that we could have been in resources that we could have done work in-house, we weren't doing it. So, that was costing us money on that. The reason I wanted to do 2% and not go away with it at all is because we still have growing needs in the city. A relief was taking it from 5% to 2% because we still have... We had a request, I think, for like 16 additional staff members to keep us from having to go out and contract these things out. We can do them in-house. We were so bare bones before we started. I think we had to buy five to six vehicles just to do the regular projects that we were so far behind on. Again, you have not... You've constantly heard me say how behind we were in maintenance and day-to-day. On one of the streets in Cavalier Manor, the road was so bad, and the infrastructure was so bad, the road broke. It cracked, literally a sinkhole while a truck was there performing work. And so, we've neglected our system. I would love to go 0%, but again, we did a stormwater reduction of 5-point-some-million, so that's going to be reflective in this budget. We did an $8 million reduction in tax. We, as the body of council, has authorized us to do 8 million, and now we're going to have to deal with personal property, which the proposed would be 50%. So, something you have to hold on to because we still have work to do, but we're trying to provide the citizens a relief in every area. Absolutely, we would love to do zero, but with all of the needs of that department, I thought 2% was realistic. At least they will see a relief in the water at that point in a bill. But council, on this for 2025 budget, has rolled over any additional dollars into the relief for the citizens and it costs.
Well, what I was getting at also is to... If our contractual agreements have any clauses in there where we can increase, are we taking advantage of that? Or are these agreements up for renegotiation?
Yeah. For bulk water, as you mentioned, those are rates that we can look at, as it relates to Chesapeake, Suffolk. They buy water from us, and the rates are based on... I think we did this last year, but I can bring this back to you all for review so that you are aware. I think last year, I took the rates of what we were... What they were charging in Chesapeake, Norfolk, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach, and compared it to our rate, and we were not the highest. I believe we were one of the lowest. So, that's something I could definitely... Water and sewer... Yeah. So, I don't know if they're related. So, when I look at this, in Hampton Roads, we are the lowest as it relates to... On the south side. But I can provide that information back with a clearer view, so you can see the comparative.
Yeah. I'd like to see the comparison with what our residential customers are paying versus bulk rate, and if there's room to increase that to lessen the burden on the residential sector. I think we need to take a look at that.
Residential versus commercial?
Yeah. And commercial, I'm talking about any bulk contractual agreements that we have out there. And you mentioned 10 million was taken out of the utilities and transferred to the general fund?
Yeah. Every year for the last... I would say for the... Let's just say 10 years. Utilities has always taken... The general fund has always used $10 million from the utilities fund just to balance the budget. Last year, I think last year, we reduced that transfer. 23, we reduced the transfer. This year, 24, we reduced the transfer for the budget so that they could use... It's almost like pay-as-you-go. They can use the money that they actually received... They can use the money that they actually receive from rates or whatever surplus to put back into CIP and doing their money. And again, there was, because of some of the processes, we've changed in utilities. Remember, we had enough to be able to supplement the sheriff. It was like a million and some dollars, this council did. So process changes, upgrades, updates, and being able to keep some of those dollars in the fund to be able to do other things that they need, has really benefited the city.
Wasn't there a case in Fredericksburg a few years back where money generated by utilities and the utility fund, that money had to be spent on utilities, not transferring it to the general fund?
So I think the city attorney provided you some backup with that the last time. And again, this was a transfer from a proprietary fund to the general fund, which is legal and allowable. What that case was, was separate and apart from what we are doing here.
Okay, so that had nothing to do with the general utility fund?
Not that, if the city attorney wants to...
If you're referring to the transfer pursuant to the sheriff, that did not, that was...
Not the sheriff, just the transfer from utility fund to the general fund.
That can be, it depends on whether the funds are unencumbered, and that's sort of the driving force behind it. But I would need an example specific. In the last transaction that we had, they were unencumbered. But in terms of your discussion, that is a concern to look into before any such transfers occur.
Well, that's not the first time. This is generally accepted accounting principles. That is nothing that is outside of what is allowable for a proprietary fund to fund things with a general fund. And we do it through a budget transfer. Yeah, but that's generally accepted accounting principles. I don't...
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Burke, for the presentation, madam, and to the city manager. From the Appendix A of the city code, it states that we're going to go from July to '24 to whenever, to get this to the rate that we need it to be. So the question is, where are we now and what is the magic figure we're trying to get to? I mean, we're not going to keep going 5%, 5% or 2% here and there till we get to, what's the magic?
Yeah. So back when this was proposed in 2018 or adopted in 2018, the fund was, it was below. It was, yeah, it was below where the financial advisors advised us where we need to be with the level of projects that we have needed for the city, along with the mandates. Because the reason you all, and I say the body of council at the time, adopted that ordinance was because of the mandates that we have. Again, we're talking $100 million worth of requirements, mandates, that we have just on the dam alone. So with that, and the capacity of debt that we can request, money has to be generated from somewhere. It has to come from somewhere. So until we reach $100 million or the dam projects, and I'm not cursing, this is the dams. Until those projects are complete, I don't think there is a magic number. I think it was done with the intent that it would relieve us of having to acquire so much debt to oversee or to actually complete these projects. But it didn't take into consideration all the current day-to-day projects that we have as it relates to our infrastructure. I mean, that's just one project, but we have many others. So to your question, I don't believe at this point, there is a magic number. The purpose was to relieve us of having to take out so much debt to be able to do that major project that we don't have a choice in, in that matter.
So which, I guess, takes me to another question. We have liaisons that are going to have a meeting with congressional leaders. Congressman Scott, is this something that we might be able to ask for? A pitch in the bucket that can help offset some of this need?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take, you know, if there's grant money to be received for this. And we have been in communication with agencies, federal agencies, state agencies. And we have received some funding, grant funding, for this project because they understand that it needs to be done. I often get emails to say, hey, we have some funding available, and we apply for it. So we have many opportunities to get dollars for this project because it's a mandate. It's not an option for us to have, or to complete. But what I also will say, I think in 2020 or 2021, I just don't remember off the top. One of the things we did was, we kept the 5% increase, but we delayed it. I don't know if you all recall. We looked at what we had as, in the ordinance, the requirement was 5%. Council said with everything going on with COVID. So we delayed that increase until January, because the increase would start July 1. We delayed the 5% increase to January to give people an opportunity for recovery. And so that, I just want to be crystal clear. This is proposed. You all can say yes, no, 5%, stick with it. You can say up, down, or what we move at the desire of council. But just to understand, we would have to find those dollars to replace that with all the needs. I believe the budget request for them was 14 positions. They're still in need of equipment, and we still have some major projects. And the Charleston project is a project that we have. I know you all have been bombarded with emails as it relates to that, and that's not a cheap project. I can definitely provide some information as to where we stand. But just for the knowledge, there are five different water... Yeah, yeah. So... Okay, so what I'll do, I'll provide some information back to council as it relates to that.
Okay. So the 2% is just to give more relief to our citizens, rather than having the 5% at this time? It's not that we're getting funding from someplace else to help us reach the $100 million dam?
Yeah, the 2% is definitely to give our citizens some relief. But we are continuously searching and seeking funding for grant money to be able to address some of these issues that we have and the mandates that we have on us. And we have deadlines for those, so...
Great. I like the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burke, my question in regards to the 2%. I see there's a lot of, we have a lot of bullet points here, but there's no dollar figures. And so could you tell me what the 2% would equate to in dollars, roughly?
So for the water rate, it would be 10 cents per 100?
Well, I mean, like, as far as the budget's concerned, overall, what would that 2% represent?
So the 2% for both sides totals about $500,000.
About $500,000 for both sides?
Yeah, for water and sewer, both, that would be about $500,000.
Okay. And my next question, kind of piggybacks off of Vice Mayor Lucas Burke. When we speak about our federal legislative priorities, water and sewage are huge, huge issues. And so I would have hoped that we would have had these listed in our state legislative package, but also in our federal legislative package, especially when we're in a... You know, it's one thing to search out for grants, but it's another thing when we work with our federal legislators to get budget amendments and earmarks, especially when there's federal mandates for a city such as Portsmouth, where federal facilities use our water. So the benefit of the city of Portsmouth improving our water infrastructure benefits the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, and also benefits the Portsmouth Naval Hospital. So all your federal facilities here. And so when, one of the things when I'm running for council, when speaking to a lot of the citizens out here, having that conversation of, how do we bring the federal people to the table to help to alleviate some of this cost? $155 million is a lot of money. And the taxpayers of Portsmouth shouldn't have to bear that cost. There's multiple ways to do that. So hopefully, to Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke's point, this will be added to the federal legislative priority list, so that we can hopefully take this $155 million down a whole lot more. And then you said the 2% equates to roughly $500,000 on each side, which is roughly a million dollars?
Sorry, both totaling about $500,000.
So for both together? So, okay.
It's about $300,000 and $200,000. We get less revenue from sewer than we do from water.
Gotcha. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Burke or our interim city manager. Will we be hearing from our financial advisors before the adoption of the budget?
No, there's nothing specific to this budget as it relates to this. The financial advisors would only come when it's regarding another, a bond sale that we're trying to do. Because we're trying to acquire a facility.
Okay, okay. My concern with the relief that's being given is that it seems at some point down the line that, given all of the projects and the aging conditions that we've talked about of our water system, somewhere down the line, that relief is going to have to end. And I'm just concerned, is that going to have a significant impact on what the citizens might see in an increase? Now, that may be alleviated if there's some certainty as far as a revenue stream that is going to cover this relief. Are we at that point where we have a certain revenue stream that is replacing the relief that we're given?
So we've kind of been replacing it in two ways. First off, you know, going to a monthly billing cycle really has improved monthly revenue. We've been getting more revenue. People are paying more on time. And they're getting, you know, there's less bad debt being written off, so that's an increase in revenue. The other thing is by reducing the transfer from the public utility fund to the general fund, that's freeing up revenue that can stay in the fund. This 2% includes a full capital program and a full operational program. So we haven't needed to make any cuts to project out this 2%. I'll be the first to tell you, if something comes up next year and it needs to be X, Y, or Z, I'll tell you exactly, you know, in my professional opinion, if it needs to be X, Y, or Z. But nothing this year seems to be an opportunity cost.
Okay, because I know council has, over the years, been presented with the significant issue of the aging infrastructure. And so my concern is that with the relief and the availability of the public utility funds that we have in place to take care of those issues that we need to address with our water system.
Yes, sir.
That's the case. That's the case with continuing with the relief?
One time. It's not instructive on future years at all. This is just for this year to make, to fully fund the capital program, to fully fund the operational program. We don't need any more than 2% to do that.
So next year, you're saying it could go back up to 5%?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure the citizens are aware of this roller coaster that, you know, that we may be riding on in that regard. Now, the other issue deals very minor. The water meters, position readers, I thought that we were converting over to digital water meters.
Yes, sir.
So the city unfortunately has a mixture of residential manual water meters and commercial manual water meters. So we are in the process, and have been in the process, within the last year of first converting our residential water meters that are manual to electrical, electronic water meters. And then, in the process, we are converting our commercial water meters to electronic. The biggest shift for that is having the meters available to do it. So commercial meters are not just a little small meter like you see in your front yard. These are actual large-capacity meters. I have the sizes, but not with me. And all of those need to be converted digital. Right now, we spend time going out and manually reading all of those meters. And I think we have over 290-some, almost 300, commercial meters. So we have to go out and read those, if not more. And that's as it relates to the bulk meters as well, Chesapeake, Suffolk. And so converting those meters is not a one-hit wonder. That takes a little time, because some of those meters, we actually have to contract out there so much. Once we convert all of our commercial meters, and we've been doing a big push for that, and our residential meters, then you will actually see people getting charged for the actual water and consumption. What we have been doing in the past, unfortunately, is estimating. You would see the same amount every month. I knew you all received an influx of calls at one time when we started really, truly reading the meters, because then it was almost playing catch-up. To read a true meter, to really figure out what the consumption was, put us in a position where we were actually truing up. And in the past, we hadn't done that. 23704, 23707, those meters have been manually read, on most of those meters that haven't been converted. We are now in the process of one of our poles at the pavilion having, I forget what the term is, but having technology that can read all the meters in this area. And so immediately, you would get alert if there was an issue with the meter versus someone having to manually, physically go out and figure out, is this meter wrong? Is something broken? So we take that process out, and we actually are freeing up our people to do the real work that is needed to get this done.
So the percentage of these meters that are needed are mainly commercial? Are all residential, digital now?
Not all of them. We had to wait on the actual product to get here. COVID really messed us up. And so, but it opened our eyes to a lot of things, and we were leaving what I call money on the table.
So is there a timeline as far as the commercial meters being replaced?
Yeah, the hope is to get the commercial meters done within this year. We've already been working on them. But the problem was getting the actual meters, they weren't in stock. Yeah, unfortunately. But we're now moving toward getting that. We have a company that is assisting us in getting the commercial meters and getting them replaced. So we're on the right road. I would say, I estimate all of this to be done, or I would say 60% of the commercial meters replaced by the end of the year, because we are really pushing to get it. As the equipment comes in, we're replacing them.
So you were saying something about some 16 readers that are needed?
Oh, no, just not readers. We need 16 staff members, all of just a plethora. I think you have it.
It's eight.
Yeah, it's eight. I saw 16 somewhere.
16 total, eight reader readers.
Okay.
So those eight meter readers that will be brought on, and then once you convert to digital, hopefully within this year, will those persons be absorbed back into the department? Or are these temporary positions?
And there would still be some need for a digital meter reader to go out there into the community, you know, A, do checking it, making sure that there's any troubleshooting or anything like that. There's still a need for them.
Okay.
And to fix them when they break.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor then.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I want to tie together something I think that I heard you say and what Councilman Whitaker was talking about, and this really is for the city manager. So my understanding is, the 5% a year is basically keeping us up the way we've been doing business. Now we're changing the way we're doing business because we're reading, or we're billing monthly. And so our delinquent accounts have gone down, and so that's money in the bank just one time, when the delinquent accounts have gone down. And then the other thing that you're talking about doing is bringing some of the projects in-house that we've been contracting out. It's cheaper, as I understand it, to use our own people to do a lot of these projects than it has been to do contracting out. Those two things together are basically what's allowing us to go from a 5% increase down to a 2% increase for this coming year. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moody?
Councilman Moody, so you have the floor?
My question is, what's the dollar value of the current dollar value of delinquent?
I would have to look, can I bring that back to you and send it back to your report back?
Yeah.
I think that would be good information. I think some of the council will recall what it was a couple of years ago, which was quite high, in the millions. So I think it'd be good to update that. And how, and what are we using, utilizing to collect the, the outstanding balances as well?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Just one more question, Mayor, I'm sorry.
You have the floor, Vice Mayor.
Yes, so, so casino, you know, we all get in the question, is any of the casino fundings being used to offset any of the water system?
There is no money going from the casino to the public utility fund, except for as our bills pay. What it has allowed us to do is to reduce that transfer. So, and we talked about the, it was at 10 million, we reduced it to 5 million this year. We're reducing it more, you know, our, our hope is to reduce it more this year. That's allowed us, the, you know, the increase in revenue, you know, writ large, casino, property taxes, you know, whatever it is, has allowed us to reduce that transfer from the public utility fund to the general fund.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor?
Yeah, so in line with the issue that Vice Mayor just raised in your address, so the, so what about this issue that was brought to us as far as now that the city would be receiving increased revenue from the casino, that you have this inverse relationship with the state funding, that you will now have a, some decrease in state funds that will come to the city? Is that, I know that was raised at one of the council meetings, I know a citizen brought it up, and I thought that it was a, something that wasn't.
There's been a handful of discussions about, and it's kind of one of those things with the ebbs and flows of, you know, the conversation in Richmond. You know, I've heard sales tax disbursement's going down, I've heard abolishing the grocery tax that would reduce local revenues. There was talk about abolishing the car tax. I, I don't know of any of those continuing through the process. I think they've kind of gotten held up in committee, is my understanding. There has been talk about kind of decreased, decreased disbursement from the state to schools, but I haven't heard. And that, that's more of a factor of demographics, I think, you know, a few legislators are kind of staying ahead of it and saying, hey, this is a problem for the General Assembly to fix, but I have not heard any continued things making their way out of committee.
So there's no funding formula with the state whereby, when a city has increased revenues, that it has an inverse relationship on some state funding?
It may make some very little things on the margin, but no writ large things like you see with schools.
Okay, okay.
Seeing no more questions, Mr. Burke, thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the city manager's summary. I don't think we have a closed session item this evening. We do?
We do.
So I'll read the city manager's summary, and then I'll yield to the clerk. Adoption of a ordinance, oh, 24-34, 21,208, City Attorney. Adoption of a ordinance authorizing payment of issued funds. 24-35, $730,000 from the Department of Social Services. Increase in social services budget, and appropriate appropriating said funds in 24 budget supplemental funding for personnel services by the state. 24-36, 27,429, Sheriff's Office. Adoption of a ordinance, accepting two additional grant funds, grant awards through the criminal justice system. 24-37, $14,000 from the Sheriff's Office. Adopting an ordinance, accepting participant payments from Sheriff's Office Global Positioning System. 24-38, Public Utilities. Adoption of a resolution for approximately 255 feet for the purpose of installing and maintaining gas utility facilities. 23-39, Public Utilities. Adoption of resolution authorizing the conveyance of an achievement of 15 feet for Virginia Electric and Power Company. 24-40, 358,767, from Behavioral Health Services. Adoption of a ordinance accepting Children's Community Crisis Stabilization Services Funds. 24-41, DCM. Adoption of an ordinance amending, reordaining Article 1 of Chapter 4 of the Code of City of Portsmouth. Oh, I know what this is. For the purpose of prohibiting horses on public ways except for in certain specific instances. That is it for me.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
I was just curious, do we, do we need a consensus on the Share the Air ordinance for next meeting, or?
If that's the desire of council, what we were talking about, the reason that this was brought to your awareness is because this is a program that they have been soliciting. What I was actually working with them and the, and the Parks and Rec Director is we are looking at areas that designate for that, and we were gonna run it through a pilot program. I'm not aware if the pilot program requires an ordinance, but we were gonna do it as a pilot program to start, and if this was something that actually made sense to do around the city by providing feedback, we would come to you and require, request an ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Tillage, so you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two, just two statements real quick. To Dr. Whitaker's question a few minutes ago about the casinos revenue, Dr. Whitaker, that's relating to the composite index for local ability to pay, which affects the formula for our schools, which ultimately does go through locality. Yes, sir. But then also, I know that we were about to conclude our work session, but Judge Griffin was in attendance, and so I was wondering if she was gonna have the ability to present at our work session.
Um, Judge Griffin, how are you, ma'am? Good to see you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How much time do I have? I'll try to be fairly brief. I can tell you, I'm here in my capacity as Chief Judge of the Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court to give you all more context about this detention crisis, I'm, we call it, situation that we have. Just to give you a little bit of background and full context, the city of Portsmouth is also known as the Third Judicial District of the Commonwealth of Virginia. It has a court services unit for the Third District that is under the auspices of the Department of Juvenile Justice. They have certain administrative and other responsibilities, and they have managed the placement of juveniles in detention for a number of years. For three or four decades, Portsmouth has utilized the Chesapeake Juvenile Services Center, used to be the Tidewater Detention Home, to house our pre-trial juveniles that needed secured detention. Fifteen months ago, the Chesapeake City Manager wrote to our court service unit and announced that they were repurposing their shelter, their detention center. They were reducing their beds to 25, and those would be beds for Chesapeake residents only. They told us in December that we had until January 31st to get our kids out. We don't have a licensed, functional detention center here in the city. We have used Chesapeake, and I think everybody just took it for granted for a long time. So this was kind of a rude awakening, and there was a scramble. I met with Mayor Glover and the city manager in January of last year to be sure they understood the situation. The manager did negotiate, well, and court services begged Chesapeake to do something different for us. They extended that deadline from January 31st till the end of March. And they, in addition, said that we could house our kids that were there until their cases were complete. We actually still have one individual in Chesapeake. Here's the situation as it has developed. Court Services is not responsible for placing these kids in detention centers. That's a local responsibility, it is municipal function. I know that the manager and the mayor have been trying to work on this, but I cannot tell you how urgent it is that we do something. The practical and logistical problems that this has created are extraordinary. Let me give you some examples. In November, we had 26 kids in detention scattered all over the state. They are being held as far away as Bristol, Virginia. That's an eight-hour trip one way that our deputies have to make. We've worked real hard to use other facilities, the local homes, Virginia Beach, Newport News, and Chesapeake will not take our kids. We don't have memorandums of understanding with any of them. We pay for these facilities on a per diem basis. Mr. Torres, who is the executive director now of the Court Services Unit, has, has had to write the manager and say, we've exhausted our detention budget for the current fiscal year, and we need another million dollars for the next fiscal year. The fees per diem per child fluctuate from a low of $190 per day, that's Chesapeake, to $300 a day in Northern Virginia. As of the end of January, we had kids in Williamsburg. That's the manager did negotiate an MOU with Merrimack Detention Center, which is in Williamsburg, which is the closest, 45 minutes away, but we only have seven guaranteed beds. We have an average of 18 kids a month in detention. Right now, we have kids in Winchester, that's 229 miles from here, four hours one way. The deputies have to move these kids. Their families can't get to these kids. Their lawyers can't get to these kids. It's affecting everybody in the court system. We have kids in Charlottesville. Over the weekend, four young, four youngsters were arrested on firearms charges, which is mandatory detention. They had to be transported by police all the way to Bristol. We, so we still have now five at Bristol. We've got four at Goochland, two in Alexandria. Their families can't get to them, their lawyers can't get to them. The city has got to make this an urgent issue. I sent a letter to the city last April to, well, to the council, and describing the situation, the hardships it was creating, the damage to public safety, the administration of justice, because we as judges are trying to let as many kids out as we can. Some of these kids are dangerous, and something's gonna happen that's not gonna be good. I wrote to you April 28th last year, "I urge you to move this issue to the top of your agenda. If funds can be expended immediately to reconfigure space to conform to minimum detention facility standards at the Hampton Roads," well, of course, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail is a whole new situation now. Western Tidewater, I understand the Fifth Judicial District, which is Suffolk, Franklin, Isle of Wight, they're doing a needs assessment or a feasibility study with Western Tidewater. We need, we need to do some, even, even the city jail. I mean, as much money as we're spending, it's an average of $100,000 a month is being spent to detain these, these children. November, we hit a high of $135,000 for the month of November. Take, take $100,000, $150,000 and let the sheriff get that basement fixed up so it can be used for juvenile detention. But somebody really needs to be the point person for the city on this. Manager can't do it all. But it, the situation is bad, and I just, I wanted the opportunity to explain to you how, how difficult this is. We need both a short-term solution and a long-term solution. And if that can be, I mean, at some point, I was reading, there's a public safety center on the books. Well, put a juvenile wing at your public safety center. I realize that it has to be licensed, there are certifications to be obtained, but that's all possible. But you've gotta start planning for it now. You can't get a facility ready and then decide you're, you're gonna staff it. That's gonna take another six months or a year. Somebody needs to really start working on this now. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank, thank, thank you, Judge Griffin, and, and I'll preface that by saying, you know, when we had our conversation, we, we understand the, the sense of urgency. But to your point, you're exactly right. It's, it's a, it's a community effort, and, and it's something that unfortunately, it can't be resolved. A building can't be retrofitted, things can't be done in, 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 as, as rapidly as some of us would like. We certainly can appreciate, and, and no one wants to have children all over. When I visited Chesapeake, before they even, when, after they had issued the memorandum, you know, we, we had that discussion in Chesapeake, where are our children going to go? And based on that, we started all collaborating, and certainly with your help. We're gonna continue to work as hard as we can to meet the need of our children and their families. And I, I just wanted to share that with you.
Well, I know it can't be done overnight, but something more has to be done in the short term. Because if we're looking at a long-term solution, we're looking two or three years. This, this situation is just not sustainable for that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, good evening, Honorable Judge Griffin, how are you? I just wanna have a quick fact thing check. So, again, we definitely missed the boat with Chesapeake, of the Chesapeake facility, but I just want to remind everybody that the Chesapeake facility was never a regional facility to start with. They did guarantee some beds for localities, but at no point, they were a regional facility. That's why they decided that they would pull all of their kids in and send everybody else's kids out. I think Portsmouth is one of the very few facilities, well, cities that don't have a juvenile detention center, and we have a long-term plan for that with the acquisition of a building that we are trying, or in the negotiations of right now, as allowing that. But I also wanted to mention Portsmouth has never had a juvenile facility. And this wasn't a just happened now, this is something that's been an issue.
It certainly has been, but everybody took it for granted, and all of a sudden, we can't.
Right, and we no longer have the Pines as well, because we used to have the Pines, and so that's no longer operational. But again, we talk about this situation as if it fell out of the sky. Judge Griffin, could you just speak to the change that happened in March? Because we saw, I have a document from, cause I was researching this from Juvenile Justice, as of March 1st, 2023, and some sentencing guidelines and some changes that caused this issue. I have been talking with our police chief on this matter, and we actually talked about how other localities are experiencing this. That's why the other localities were trying to come to some agreement with Tidewater Regional, that think Western Tidewater. But Western Tidewater is gonna turn into a facility that is probably gonna house one of the other localities in need of jails, of space for inmates when the regional jail closes. So that's why that wasn't such a, a opportunity for us to jump on that, because they have some other needs that they're trying to meet as well. A short-term, I don't have a short-term. The council, we don't have a short-term, other than to fund your budget to be able to have and allow transport. Again, we have kids that are doing crimes that are requiring them to, to go to juvenile jail.
Any firearms charge, and there are more now than ever.
So can you, can you talk about that? Because that's where we're seeing the uptick of our youth, because the guidelines have changed. Could you please expand upon that a little?
Well, it's really a Department of Juvenile Justice, they put in effect what they refer to as an override, which means that their probation officers don't have discretion any longer to recommend something other than secured detention for any child that's arrested because of a firearms charge. Part of the problem is the nature of juvenile offenses has changed, frankly. They used to steal cars, now they're shooting everybody.
Right, and which has caused this. Right. And which has caused this uptick in other localities as well as ours. And that's why we are having to find housing for our juveniles, where, you know, this wasn't a mandate before. So we're faced with having to address something that has shifted and changed in their environment in which we are now in. And I think it needs to be addressed. It needs to be... That's the one thing I haven't heard anybody talk about, is if all of a sudden, everybody just has a problem. We have a problem because the law has changed for the arrest of our juvenile.
But that doesn't change our need for a solution.
Right. But the problem is, because that law has changed, it has caused us to have to shift some things that we're doing. And so I just didn't want it to come across that all of a sudden, we have this problem, and, you know, what are you going to do? This has created a problem with us. Now, long-term solution, we do have a plan. Short-term, I'm open for any suggestions, because at this point, transportation is the only way. Whether, because the kids, and it's causing an issue with the parents being able to see their kids. I'm really sorry about that. But we don't have a facility currently that can house our youth other than transporting them as it relates to the facilities that will. I want to also mention, like you said, we've called several facilities. You and I both, I don't know you specifically. Hampton Roads, they said they don't want our youth. And I mean, you can, I can pretend like they didn't say it. I can pretend like it didn't happen. I go to CAO meetings, and they said no, which has caused us to have to travel outside Hampton Roads. It's not like their hands were out and rolling out the red carpet for our youth.
Well, I refuse to believe there isn't some kind of short-term solution. And we just need to find it. I mean, the sheriff keeps saying he's got a basement he can adapt, but it's got a water problem. It's got some physical plant problems. I don't know. I don't know what that's all about. But somebody needs to ask the questions of all the people who are stakeholders. I convened a meeting in December in my courtroom of everybody I knew that had an interest in this. And Mr. Tillage and Vice Mayor Burke attended. Mayor and manager were traveling, as I understand it, were not able to be there. But I had lawyers. I had the public defender. I had the Commonwealth attorney just to brainstorm solutions. Chief Jenkins was there. He had court, I'm sorry, the sheriff had, he was not there, but he had court security people there. I just think there's something more can be done. I'm not sure what it is, but I think we have to keep talking about it.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Judge Griffin, for this very informative presentation. The sheriff is here. I would like to hear from the sheriff directly in regards to the short-term recommendation. You did make a short-term recommendation of preparing the basement of the jail. I would like to hear from Sheriff Moore.
Well, I would be happy to step away from the mic.
Thank you, ma'am. Sheriff Moore, would you please come forward?
So Sheriff Moore, the judge gave us information regarding the extreme efforts that are being done by the police and the sheriff's department in transporting youth all across the state at a cost of $100,000 a month. What is your position on the recommendation of renovating the basement of the jail to alleviate the issue?
Moving forward, I would like to get an estimate of what it would cost. We have no idea. The water in that area hasn't been available since December 2022. And to give you an example, excuse me, I got slightly cold. To give you an example, the challenges that we've been facing. This coming Thursday, we have to make a trip to Northern Virginia, right outside of Washington, D.C. The weather is going to be an issue. We have to pick up two juveniles, one for hearing and one for a trial. So both will have to go back that same day. And even the juvenile may have a two- or three-day trial. He has to be picked up each morning and taken back each afternoon. There is no place in the area to house him overnight. And normally, when my deputies make a trip to Bristol, Tennessee to take someone, that's an eight-hour, seven, eight-hour trip one way. They normally leave 7:00 the preceding evening, arrive in Bristol at 2:00 a.m., pick up the juvenile, transport that juvenile back to Portsmouth for court on that day. After court that day, the two additional deputies have to take that juvenile back to Bristol, Tennessee. So it has created an enormous hardship for our agency as well as the courts. And the problem is, when we dedicate that many people manpower-wise to transport personnel in the state and outside of the state, then we fall short for court security. So that's been the ongoing issue now for about the last year.
Right, right. And so I'm aware of the hardship issue. I think we're all clear on that. My question deals with what you said as far as getting a cost. When can that be done to determine the feasibility of what the judge has recommended?
Yeah, as soon as the city moves forward and sends someone over.
So the city needs to do the estimate?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
And what we're looking at, we're not even looking at long-term. If we could just house a juvenile overnight. Because housing overnight won't require the necessary things that we'd normally get if it's long-term. You know, because if it's long-term sheltering of a juvenile, you have to have the educational component. You have to have the complete separation from the adult population. And it has to be a completely visible, enclosed security area for the juvenile.
So I just want to make sure everybody's clear, because everyone's in the room. So are you saying that it is the city manager's responsibility to get an estimate for upgrading the basement of the jail, not your responsibility?
Well, right, right, because it's a city-owned building.
Okay.
And justification for the city. They were working on the problem, and then a number of plumbers came out. They put the cameras into the water system, and there seemed to be a blockage somewhere between this building and City Hall Building, meaning the jail. And that was the problem. And then after that was observed and found out, it completely came to a halt.
Okay. And would that be something that you would be supportive of, that those juveniles would be kept in the basement of the jail?
Definitely. Because, you know, like the judge was saying, that we are at a critical point. And the thing about it's a liability, not only for the sheriff's office, but it's a liability for the city.
Okay.
And we're willing to work with the city, but we have to have some type of response. And it has to be a decision made now. We can't wait on a prospective building in the future to think that's going to be the long-term solution. That might be a year, two, or three years away. In the meantime, it is a dangerous, dangerous situation.
Right. And so to our interim city manager, when can we get that feasibility of the basement of the jail being renovated to correct and address this situation?
I don't have an answer for you for that, because I don't know what that would entail. I'm not sure how they would... If you're speaking as it relates to fixing the property and just water, that would be one thing. But what we're in discussion about, so that I'm sure I want to just make sure I got the right direction. We're looking for corrective action to modify, fix, and address the building issue so that it can, because again, there are federal regulations that come with that.
Yeah, so whatever, of course, there will be all kinds of regulations probably come with that. I'm saying that all needs to be taken into account and letting us know what the feasibility, the cost of addressing that, given the urgency of the moment.
So I don't have an answer, and I wouldn't, because I don't know the timeline. It would take the contract that out to have someone to do that. So what I can do, I will go back to my staff and begin the process to have that contracted out for review. So I don't have an answer for a date, but we can start.
No, 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 I don't want a date. I'm saying that there needs to be, there needs to be a start of the process. I don't know if it's an RFP or something needs to be put out to address correcting the basement.
Well, the assessment. So what I'll do, what my plan is, now that I have direction from the council, is I will have someone to go and start the process to determine next steps and the assessment of the facility. And then I will have to come back to council with that amount of the assessment and what the timeline to get that done.
Right.
Or if it could be done at all, because it may be, there may be implications with the building and the structure that it may not be able to be done.
I don't know that. That's why we're asking for the information to come back.
Absolutely, sure. So we'll go through the questions, and then we'll call for consensus for that matter. Because anytime we look at expanding or spending expenditures, we need to have a consensus of council. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Judge Griffin, I just want to thank you for accepting interim city manager's invitation to come before us today to discuss this very pressing matter. And thank you for walking us through the timeline of this. You know, you said you spoke with the interim manager and the mayor in January of 2023, 13 months ago. I just, you know, it's just kind of disheartening 13 months later. We've kind of been stagnant as far as the solution, as far as a short-term solution is concerned. I think, you know, unfortunately, I feel sometimes we become victims of our own minds when we think about the situations and circumstances that the city's been placed in. And so, but regardless of when it began, to your point, solutions need to be addressed, especially when it's on the forefront. And so, to the, I definitely support Councilman Whitaker's request for the feasibility study to see if that can be done in the basement of the jail. And I think it's very important, because like Dr. Whitaker said, we have everybody in the room to work on the solutions. Unfortunately, we don't have enough time in this work session to hand, you know, to figure out all the solutions would be. But that's how things start, is when everybody's in the room having the conversations. And so I just want to thank you for extending your time and yourself to be here this evening, and also to you, Sheriff, for doing the same. I think it's very important that we do find these solutions. And as far as the transportation budget is concerned, I know that, you know, it's been stated that we would be supporting that transportation budget. But do we know what that budget is? And has money been given?
Yeah, we've been working with the city manager, so that's good.
That's great. And then also, you know, while you're up here as well, you know, you already mentioned two possible solutions as far as the basement, but then also partnering for overnight stays for some of the inmates, so they don't have to do those long-distance. Because ultimately, it's not just about the money. It's also about the human capital that's put into it. And that's our workers, our staff, our men and women in uniform who are working tirelessly to get this job done. And we need to be looking out for their best interest as well. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
And before we go to the next speaker, Madam interim city manager would like to have a, make a comment.
I just want to make mention that when this was brought to me in January, it was already something that was submitted in December. So when I came in in January 2023, I made council aware of the concern and the issue that was surrounding our youth not being able to go to the Chesapeake facility any longer. That was an email with some information that went out back in January. And fortunately, Chesapeake, the relationship that I had with Chesapeake, they extended our stay because they sent everybody out. It was, as Judge Griffin mentioned, she did, we did that in March, January. They kept us to March. Then they kept us through April, and then they still have one of our children. And they're going to move them out when they age out. I am actually making mention of this, because I just want to make sure that you all have been informed along the way. This wasn't a first time you're hearing this today. This has been information that I've submitted to council over and over, keeping you all in the loop of what is going on with our youth. I also want to make mention, I didn't personally meet with Judge Griffin in January. We've had several conversations as it relates to the youth. So I just want to be clear, when people say they're disappointed that you all just found out or haven't been kept in the loop, or I met with her and nobody else did, that is incorrect. And I just wanted to make, ensure that people understood. This is not a just-to-day problem. This has been going on ever since Chesapeake said that they were no longer going to be able to allow people to use their facility as well as, I have been working with the judge and her group to ensure they have the funding. The law changed. So we just have to ensure that we can keep up with what is going on in our environment. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Dr. Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo the sentiments of my council members. I do thank Judge Griffin for being here and hosting the meeting last year in December. We learned a lot that we didn't previously know and didn't recognize had happened or had occurred over the time period. And I thank Sheriff Moore for being here as well to bring the perspective that we had been hearing and glad that it has been brought to the table. What you said is that this is a critical matter. This is something that needed to move to the top of the agenda. Now, whether it's been six months ago, three months ago, whatever it is, we can't continue the status quo and expect a different result. Today, we have to make a decision that we're going to do something different. And I think this is what the consensus is going to be. I don't care how much it costs, whatever it needs. We need to make sure that our deputies are safe and our courts are safe and that our juveniles who are affected and the families, we take care of that today. We can no longer continue the status quo. Today, start something different.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Well, you know, the public listening to this probably thinks the solution is call a plumber and get the water restored to a basement. I guarantee you, most of us have never seen that basement. And sitting here tonight, none of us are aware of what the federal regulations are as far as making that suitable for these juveniles that are, in most cases, a danger to society. So is that going to be a secure place? I haven't heard what the occupancy would be. Would that basement hold 10 kids, 50 kids, 100 kids? And we, everybody's in agreement, and I've heard some of my colleagues use the same language, that this is critical, needs a solution. And those words are certainly on target. But I haven't heard a solution. And we still don't have a solution, because we don't know if that basement is even suitable. And the public watching this said, "Well, these idiots up here, they should have called a plumber and moved these kids to the basement." I don't think, and I suspect, that that's not going to probably be the solution. But I am in agreement. And apparently, Judge Griffin and others that probably more attuned to what's needed than some of us are, they haven't come up with a solution to offer. And I know that responsibility is on us, but not every problem has got an immediate solution. The real solution is, it'd be nice if we could send these kids back home and have them keep them in their homes. Obviously, they're, in some cases, danger to society. So that needs to be taken into consideration. But I just wanted to clarify, the basement solution, we don't know whether that's going to work or not. Hopefully, we'll find out before we spend money on whether it's even suitable. And we'll take care of all the problem. Not just, you know, six kids or 10 kids, but I don't know how many are out in Bristol or the boondocks across the state. But those are some of the things we need to find out. It's a complex solution.
So Councilman Hugo, we're going to let you speak next, then Councilman Barnes. I think it's time to move on. We've already got the discussion handled. We have a consensus, a request for consensus. I don't think we need to continue the discussion. Councilman Hugo has not had an opportunity to speak yet, nor has Councilman Barnes. So once those two speak, we'll call for the consensus, and we'll move the discussion to the next item.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Judge Griffin, thanks for being here tonight. Sheriff Moore, you too. I'm not sure if my questions for the sheriff or for the city manager. My understanding all along has been, even if we did something in the city jail that would allow us to house the kids, there's another list of requirements that have to be satisfied. So even if we fixed the jail to house kids, it's still not a short-term solution. So even if we fixed the, the jail to house kids, it's still not a short-term solution because of all this other stuff that has to happen. Is that true? Or, I mean, Sheriff Moore sounded to me like there's a way to short-circuit some of that, so that at least you can do overnight.
Sheriff, could you please come forward to, to address the question, sir?
Because if, if that's a short-term solution that helps your guys out, without having to go through all of the, you know, the rest of the certification stuff, the education programs and all that permanent stuff, that wasn't even on my list of, of, of things to consider until you mentioned it.
Yeah, what we wanted to do moving forward was at least get the jail prepared to do overnight, not long-term, just overnight, because if you bring someone in for court that day, you don't have to turn around that same day and take them back to that far destination. So starting out would be overnight. We're not looking at long-term until we get all the particulars that's needed for to get that approval. And that approval comes from the Department of Corrections. And those are the primary ones. Educational component, complete separation from adult population, and a secure area that is completely visible.
And so?
Those are the three primaries.
So we can short-circuit those other requirements for overnight stays as a potential short-term solution if we make the repairs to the?
Right. And that's what we've been looking at with all the other facilities throughout the, the region here, where they'd be willing to house just overnight, and we would pick the juveniles up early the next morning, and it has been no.
And if we wanted to do more than overnight, then we're into the rest of the certification?
Those requirements and certifications, that's, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Overnight would make a huge, huge difference.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Ironically, I, I agree with Councilman Moody. But before we approve anything within the basement, I think we personally need to go look at that ourselves, because, I mean, as somebody who's in the community a lot, and I don't, I don't want to hear from a, a parent that their child was in, and I'm not saying that it's inhumane, I'm just saying that I need to see it before I approve anything of that nature, because I don't want anybody coming to me saying those things, and I'd be like, man, I voted for this without even seeing it. And, and they come back to me, because those, those are the conversations I'm having when I'm places, in a grocery store, at my, at my children's events and things like that. So for me, if, if we're going to approve something like that, I definitely want to see that before we do that. I'm not against it if it's, if it's good, but I do want to see that. I'm just, I can't just say yes.
Thank you, sir. So, so, so with that in mind, I know Dr. Whitaker had brought before us a, a request for consensus to begin the process of assessing the current structure that was spoken of. Yes, ma'am. The city attorney would like to have a?
I know you will, I, I thank you, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. I know this was sort of an, an additional impromptu of a, of a bit of a work session by the judge and the sheriff. I do think that there's more information that probably needs to be imparted upon council before any formal or informal action is taken. I, I would ask if we could have another opportunity for a more detailed work session on the issue with all the questions that you all have presented, so that that information is before you. Taking it out of order and in pieces, when there is open litigation with the, the jail, when there is regulations involving the appropriateness of facilities for juveniles, and what short-term and long-term really means. I think similar to what the judge has done before with getting the stakeholders together, something similar should be done in terms of presenting information to you all, so we could get a fuller picture of all the pieces as they connect together, and then make an informed decision on what should be done from there. Not in the moment, but as we get the information and we can prioritize responsibilities. I would ask that you all consider doing another work session.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes. To have the chief judge of the Domestic and Juvenile Relation Court to come before council and to explain the urgency of the moment, and to suggest a recommendation of a solution, I think that what each council member has expressed is all part of the process. There's no solution that anyone is trying to make tonight, but that doesn't mean that we do not start the process. Visitations can take place as part of the process, because we have made no determination at this point. We asked for it to look at the feasibility of it, given that you did have your chief judge to come before us, as well as the sheriff. And so I just want to, I, I hear what our city attorney is saying, and I also heard what council members have said, but it's all part of a process that needs to begin. And I don't see how beginning the process and also receiving additional information are contradictory.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
I agree with Councilman Whitaker. I think we're going to need that piece, no matter what our decision is. So that, that would, I think, just be further delaying it. So I, I see, I don't think that's out of order to request that information as part of our final decision. We'll need it anyway.
Well, well, we've heard the request of the consensus. I think we go ahead and call for the consensus, and the consensus is to make an assessment based on the parameters that was discussed in this, in this particular conversation that we just had. So with that in mind, I think the manager has a clear understanding of what's, what's been asked. Are you okay with that, ma'am? You have a clear understanding?
Yes.
Okay, well, she, she said yes. And so I will repeat it. There was a request for consensus to begin an assessment of the feasibility of looking at the basement area of the jail, to see if, if, if we could put some level of temporary housing or temporary accommodations for our young people.
No, I thought it was assessment for, okay, so I was wrong.
Okay, go, 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 go ahead. What did you think, ma'am?
So I thought, so I thought it was to contract out, to start the process of assess, of the assessment of the facility as it relates to fixing or addressing the water issue, but as well as the components of what it would kind of, what we would need to make that a temporary solution. Because again, you're going to have to have beds, you're going to have this, but you want the full, I can start with the water issue, because that's a facility issue. But on top of that, the rest to assess what it would mean short-term to have that facility for a juvenile, you know, overnight transport. Now that he's mentioned, he, he does, he can use it for overnight, we're looking for a short-term, okay, so what that would entail.
Okay. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Just one more question for the sheriff. How, how many kids would we need to have capacity to, to house overnight? I mean, probably one or two or three? As opposed to 20, however many we have in detention?
Yeah, at, in a given time, it won't be any more than three or four.
Three or four, okay. So, so that kind of changes the calculus on what we need to, to fix, maybe?
Just like the upcoming, this coming Thursday, it's two, normally it's one.
Okay.
The most it's been is three.
Thank you.
So, so, so sheriff, what happens to the juveniles who need longer periods of stay?
That's what we're going to work towards also, yeah, to make sure we can get that certification from the Department of Corrections.
So in the meantime, you would still be in that transporting scenario?
Well, in the meantime, if we could get the jail situated to house overnight, that would be a huge help. But in the meantime, we'll still work towards that certification from Department of Corrections, just in case if we have to move in that direction of long-term housing.
Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you, sheriff. And so we, we're clear?
I guess my understanding is, is fix the water situation, so that they can house the three or four people that they overnight, that they need for overnight, then look at the, the short-term solution, which would be to see if we could make it a short-term facility, because what's happening is somebody get rested tonight, they have to take them to Bristol tonight, then they have to bring them back to court in the morning, and then they have to take them back to Bristol the next day. So if they could just stay here overnight until they go to court, and then figure out what that needs to be, then that's where we are. But fix, see what it is to fix the pump, if it's $150,000, if it's $90,000, take what we've been using to transport them, fix the pump in the interim, so that they can stay overnight, and then secondary, work on a short-term solution, so that they could be housed here.
You clear on that, Madam Manager?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So if we could get a consensus by show of hands, in agreement with that? And Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So the pump, I agree, needs to be fixed regardless, but we not agreeing to, we, we throwing, letting them stay overnight in this without looking at it? Oh, I'm just making sure.
No, sir.
What we need to do to be able to let them?
It's making it an assessment of the whole process. Yes.
No, I was listening to the vice mayor.
Yes, yes, sir.
There's, there's still going to have?
Assessment, yeah.
Okay. There's still going to ultimately have to still be a vote on the expenditure. Right, so that's what I'm saying, it's a process. So visitation and all these other issues can be taken care of during the process.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we, we moved on from that matter? That matter has been a consensus, and it was unanimous, so we're moving on to Madam City Manager. You already gave us the city manager's items, so we do have a need for a closed session. So I would ask the Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke, if you would please read the closed session motion.
Yes, I will. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing appointments to boards and commissions.
Would you, would everyone please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, 7-0.
We are in closed session.
Each council member certify that, to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a second? I would ask all my colleagues to be, vote electronically.
This item is adopted, 7-0.
We are out of close. We will take a recess for five minutes, and we will rebe, begin our regular scheduled meeting at 7:17. Thank you.